Okay, hello, welcome back everyone. Uh the board has had our organizational meeting and we were in executive session. And now I would like to ask for motion to open the work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I'll just reiterate uh what I said at the organizational meeting for those of you um just tuning in. Um so welcome to the board's first meeting of the year. Um I'm Vicky Tip, I'm happy to be your new supervisor. And we have Jen Klein, our new board member, Jeremy Salan is our uh deputy supervisor, Ali Kemtak and um Holly McCall. Holly has been on the board but uh the four of us were just reelected. So I just wanted to say once again that we will be going over a more fulsome uh discussion of board goals, both short term and long term, and what we want to accomplish for our first hundred days uh at our actual first town board meeting. This work session is for um just some perfunctory issues that we're going to discuss. We'll look at board goals that we prioritized last year so that we could think about what we want to um prioritize this year. And like I said, we'll have a more fulsome discussion at our town board meeting next week. So with that, um Jill, do you wanna start?
Sure, thank you. So the first thing on our agenda uh this evening is our goals and objectives. And um this is a preliminary step that um town boards take um each year of their two-year term, well actually the first of their two-year term. Um to take in sort of, think about in broad terms, the um the goals and objectives of that specific board so that staff has a roadmap of what is important to the board, what are the projects that they would like to see uh moved forward. And uh so that that staff knows the direction to take the must-have projects um going forward. Um so what has happened traditionally in the past is that the board has given us early on um a list of projects that are important to them and they would like to see move forward. Um and then during the course of the year, um I'm gonna come to you with Rob quarterly um and we're gonna report our progress on it. Like when we had the downtown infrastructure project, it was something that we did on a weekly, a monthly basis. Um when it had to do with um moving ahead, let's say, and doing the feasibility study for chap line, we came to the board with our progress on the projects that the board was aware. Um we might as well, let's just we'll we'll start with with sidewalks because it's the first thing right afterwards. But what I included for the board in the packet was the town board's last set of goals and objectives. Um and it can be set up anyway, this just happened to be uh a series of of Xs and Os. But basically what you do is, you know, these included uh infrastructure, zoning along North Reunion Visioning or uh town of town-owned property. The board is aware that we've got a visioning project that's about to launch. Um checked with Sabrina today, she's checking with PACE to see exactly um when they're gonna come back to us to be able to launch the website um and some dates. We've reached out to CCSD for uh a request to use uh ruins at um at Millwood School for our out public outreach and we're just trying to secure those dates and as soon as we get one,
that's great.
we'll be able to take a comfy step forward. Um let's see, sidewalks and walkability, these included the chap line, the 120 extension, uh West Orchard School in Getney, uh direct master plan. As you can see, you know, that's now been completed with this. And great, we've got some progress underway. Public art and movable art, that's something that has been um proposed to the the town. Um this has electric bus to connect to Millwood, another electric bus and cell service. And so, for example, with the concern about um the deteriorating state of our cell service, we were able to piggyback with Westchester County um in doing a uh cell service survey. Um we are still waiting to get the results of that survey in usable format for us. So basically what we're looking for is the results of the um coverage maps um in a GIS layer that we can then use to be able to um overlay the town of Newcastle and start determining where our dead zones are, where our gaps in coverage are, and whether or not there are properties um that might lend themselves to uh the installation of cell towers and allow us to be a little bit more proactive in trying to get some coverage in town. Um so that's what we're waiting on, but we're closer than we've ever been to getting it. Um.
Do we know what the delay is?
The the information wasn't presenting, wasn't delivered to us in a usable format. It wasn't in the format that we wanted. I don't know what the county envision doing with it afterwards. What we really needed to be in the GIS layer so that we could take and then do overlays and figure out my property gaps, you know, who owns this property, who owns the town-owned property, something that we, you know, what where are the problem areas.
Okay. And I but I assume we're not the only community that would ask, is that why?
Um but yeah, we were.
Okay. So Jill, as we look at these goals, I mean it's great for every board to set their priorities, but there are projects here that are very important to the town and that we wouldn't want to discontinue. That would be really disruptive to the work of the town and also what our residents need.
Right.
So there has to be a balance between that and what we'd like. And there are things that we've engaged on, that we've engaged in that were not at all part of the priorities. Like I'm surprised to see that last year, when we look at zoning and visioning of town-owned property, which we are very committed to,
Mm-hmm.
there was one, I I'm just kind of surprised to see this, like I'm the only one who put an X on that. Nobody else wanted to do it at the time and but so that's just an example of something that's very important to us. That's not necessarily part of what
Thank you.
part of what we committed to doing last year, although, you know, I'm glad to see that we didn't. It was um
Yeah, um which and and you know, it's the the other interesting thing about that is that um you know, goals and objectives um evolve as the board becomes um a little bit more experienced and experiences then taken inform your thinking. And so, you know, you try to figure out how to get to where you wanna be and you realize that, oh, what we really needed was visioning, what we really needed was community input to be able to tell us what they, yeah, thought the vision for the town was so that we would have the confidence to go forward and try to actually put that vision into action.
Agree, and you know, I I just want to reinforce that visioning and community engagement for zoning is not limited to town-owned lands. We're supposed to have community engagement for areas that have private property as well. You know, because that's that's a function of the town. So um so I guess the proposal is for us to look at what was on the docket last year and to sort of reiterate and reconfirm what we're committed to
Right, and and
and what we might want to change or not change.
Yes, I have some questions too, like for example, what's, I didn't check chap line at the time, but I might now accept that we struck out on two out of the three grants. So like my question would be if we don't get the third grant, where does that leave chap line?
Right.
Is that up to us?
Yeah, it 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 is up to you.
Right.
So um and actually you 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 touch on a really important point, which is when you take a look at the sidewalks and walkability, you can see the the concentration of Xs there. Um and
Right.
you're gonna see that sidewalks and being able to get to point A from point A to point B without gaining in a car is is always been um top of our, you know, just very important to us.
I mean, I would really like to not give up on chap line.
Yeah, either.
I would really, really work on those, getting those grants and keep working at it.
Right. Yeah.
I don't think it's something to to give up on, but if we find that we can't move forward for a while.
No, 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 um
But if we don't, yeah, if we don't get any of the grant money there, infrastructure
The larger of the grants are five million dollars and without one of those trunks coming in, it's hard to get started.
Especially if we have infrastructure projects that are essential to the function of the town, right?
Right. Right, I I just wanna be clear
But we'll consider the bump things like chap line.
I I just wanna be clear that if we turn to the other sidewalk projects that we're not giving up on chap line, we will continue to see grants, it's just that we're we can't implement it.
Right.
So I I just want people to know that that will always be on our list of priorities.
We also And I think people have to understand what Jill has said many times and we we all know in genuine, we don't know the word quickly. There are a lot of the sidewalks we want require taking of land, but just not feasible.
Yeah. If we could, we would, if, but if you'll say if it was easy, we would have done it already.
So uh
So I was wondering about 117, why it's not there?
Yeah, that's So that was a project that many boards ago had on their radar, maybe two thousand five, six, seven. Um we actually had a grant, we borrowed money at the time, then we've ended up transferring over to the Millwood sidewalk project, which just wasn't feasible. Um the amount of takings and and um it
It's not just an easy one to take it.
Yeah.
And it's also the, with the interstate road, there's also a lot of farm right for the snowshells and it's
And a lot of the properties
Snows
Five-foot zone, yeah.
They have its own weakness, right?
Which which is what, which is what leads you to the amount of taking that's required is a lot, yeah. Not just a number, but
Right, so it, yeah, so it it's over thirty homes that we would have to negotiate with, which is fine. Um we we always know that these are gonna be multi-story projects, so we we're in it for the long haul. Um but the state requires taking, so what they're talking about is a five-foot snowshoe and a five-foot sidewalk. So that means ten feet in front of a village home, which means
Pretty significant.
It 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 literally is somebody's front lawn. It means that the sidewalk is is budding someone's, you know, living room and dining room and, you know, and kitchen. It's tremendously invasive for those property owners.
And then it doesn't conform with zoning, right, in some cases?
That's that's the other thing is you wanna be really careful with those village properties that you don't render someone's property zoning non-compliant. Now you've really diminished the value of their property and it's problematic. You know, at the end of the day, you want people to be able to see that whatever contribution they're giving towards the taking is at the end, is going, is ultimately going to be beneficial to everybody and enhance their property value as well. Think about uh 120, when we did the sidewalk along there, even though we had to take and we will have to do this at that point, um which meant that it didn't go against the the uh property's acreage. It didn't render this property zoning non-compliant, it was just a use, it was just a use, even if it was a hundred year use. Um and there are other properties that we're gonna be um taking a look at to see if we could do other sidewalks. In addition to the chap line, there's uh the 120 extension. Um when we do do the um the piggyback of the uh water main of 120 when the county is coming in and putting a sewer trunk line extension, we were hoping to be able to uh extend the sidewalk up there as well. Um again, baby steps, it's a very expensive proposition, but the whole idea is that down the road to be able to get that sidewalk that now uh stops at Meadow to be able to go all the way up to Roaring Brook School and allow the kids to be able to walk would just be a fabulous thing. And then again, to be able to take it from Roaring Brook School maybe all the way up to 133. And as, you know, there's another uh small project along 133 by West Orchard School and that small section of uh between Getney and Millwood proper. If we could take and just build those little sections, all of a sudden you've got a terrific path that you're tying in the North County Trail to Getney Park. It's it's fabulous and you're allowing kids from West Orchard to be able to access Getney Park.
And you're also connecting the hamlets, connecting Millwood and the Taple Hill hamlets, you know, so
To me, yeah. Yeah, so we're, you know, slowly but surely, you know, we wish we could do like one major project and just pull everything together, but it's very expensive and it's just very time-consuming and working with this stuff is very difficult.
But the 120 that you described, that is just, that's a sidewalk going from Markor, Markort to Wagon Road.
Right.
For now, we're not going yet to to Roaring Brook Road.
No, 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 it's just again, right.
So right now, we're just looking at the the part where they're doing the county sewer extension uh in order to piggyback
Right.
the work going on there.
Right, and actually the county has told us that they won't allow a sidewalk project to be back piggybacked. And the question is, maybe we can talk to our friends at the county and try to change that a little bit. But you know, those people are gonna be tremendously inconvenienced. Um and although they will end up with sewer service at the end of the day, which is great, um it would be nice if we were able to extend the sidewalk, it really seems to be something that everybody wants. We'd love to be able to do that, but again, each one of them has their challenges. Um
But so the ones that are more feasible to look at now, just to be clear, um are the Route 133 sidewalk and the 120.
Right.
Markort to Wagon Road.
And I I will circulate to the board an email that um I received from someone who lives in uh um Chapel Conridge, would very much like a sidewalk along that section of uh 117.
Absolutely.
Yes.
The, it's like
Again, it's a taking issue.
It's a huge taking issue and take a look at the at the houses that you're asking to give up to.
Some of them are almost immediately adjacent to the road.
Which side would it be on?
It would be on the bicycle shop side of the road.
On the road.
Yeah. Uh yeah, there's a lot of those houses are
But I was gonna say take mine, but it doesn't help.
Right on.
It's on the wrong side. Because, yeah.
Yeah, I I mean, I and I think that that's, I mean, that's a, that neighborhood is filled with kids and it would be so nice for them to have a safe way to
Yeah.
to be able to walk.
Um but yeah, take a look. And again, we may, it may be that we're able to have a conversation with the with the state, but we've tried to have those conversations for the past fifteen, twenty years. That was the sidewalk one uh based upon approvals that we got in uh the early two thousands. And then the, you know, resident engineer was retiring and when he left that and if you take a look at the sidewalk, we never like, we don't use around um mature trees, we kind of, you know, switches, it makes it costly. You're not straight along good. Anyway, so um if the board can take a look at the goals and objectives, I don't want you to be limited by what's um just listed here. Um there's also a master plan that um I can take and circulate and the board may wanna take a look at that. It's got a slew of goals and objectives.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah.
Is it this, is this the
Yep, I like that. Get you the master plan. Okay.
In what level, so when we're talking about the goals and objectives, cause I think part of it was when we, when I went into this conversation last year, I was thinking, all objectives are kind of high level, but this seems like we're getting a little bit more project-specific and where do we wanna be when we're
You can you can do both, you can do both.
Okay.
And I and I think that the conversation that that he's going to meet uh next week during the um town board meeting uh when it comes to the the board's objectives is going
Right, I wanna do, I I wanna address more uh the vision level
Okay, so thanks.
set of goals and objectives at the next meeting. I think doing it at the town board meeting is better because then you have public comment and I feel it's a little more transparent, so we can have a full discussion at that point. So th- this is more of a, the work at each stuff that the board is going to work on with the staff.
Okay.
And then we'll talk about our own board goals um in a more aspirational way next, next
And but is that gonna translate to this and and then it'll be
Um in in May.
Okay, okay.
I mean, it's gonna be, there definitely is going to be some overlap.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the point of today is to just take a look at what what the board intended to do last year, where we are now and where we wanna, where we wanna go from there in a more granular kind of way.
One of the things that I noticed here is like the electric buses and things like that. I feel like we had a discussion about buses um last year. Didn't we look into the electric bus and not, it was, I I don't remember how that ended up, but
We did.
It was very expensive.
It was the senior citizen bus that we purchased and it was cost prohibitive.
And and there was a, there was a supply chain issue as well, if I recall?
Uh that's a concern. The that was more, I think, for the police cars, the the hybrid cars.
Okay.
The the electric bus, yeah, we just
The electric bus was like, that, no, that's okay, I was mixing those two.
Yeah, yeah, they were like, I don't know, like two or three times the cost of the bus.
Yeah, okay.
And we we really needed bus yesterday.
That's right, since we didn't, um
Right, it would have been nice to have the electric bus, but it just wasn't practical, so we needed the bus.
Yeah, I just, I knew that we had done something, but
Right, and and this also enables us to do a deeper dive. If you can identify for us projects that, you know, something that you really feel could move forward, then it gives us the opportunity to actually, you know, get into the weeds and figure out what do we need to do and what can do it. Um before we do the sidewalk update, you're gonna notice that there's a proposal from EDR, which is the engineering firm that um we've engaged, that the county engaged first and we have co-engaged um for the water main of the 120. And this is for uh conceptual design services for that extension of the 120 on sidewalk. So if this is something that the board would be interested in, then we would be asking the board to approve um basically a ten thousand dollar expenditure to allow them to do a feasibility study to see whether or not, what would be the environmental challenges of us putting in this side.
Do we wanna do that before the county says it can happen, the county saying no?
Well, it's not a matter of the county saying it's not gonna happen, we're just saying it's not gonna happen during the project. So the issue is updating if the town is committed to trying to extend that sidewalk, would you wait until the project's over and then taking, putting a sidewalk? Because we've got the engineering firm that's got all the TOCs right now and they're in a position
Is that coming from George Down or is that coming from someone else?
It's like from their DPW. They don't, they don't wanna be held up by, you know, the state. Hmm?
No, it just is, yeah, it comes from DPW, yeah.
I mean, is it any sort of policy or
No, I've I've sat in the room with the state DPW, except for that.
Thought this was the town
Or the DPW is in the county, that's
No, that, I'm sorry, the county's, county DPW, that's
County DPW.
Is it possible that they might change their minds if we, if we're able to talk to them?
I mean, I have to tell you that if the town board asked, DPW would do something differently. If it could be done, they would do it differently.
So I mean, my question is, is it a policy thing or just a preference?
So I think we should give it a try. Yeah.
I would say preference.
As a future project.
Seems like You're asking my honest opinion.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but
Noted, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um yeah.
Okay, good.
And uh you know, to figure out where we would put it and, you know, what what properties we would involve and things of that nature, but that would be our first step. Um
Okay, so we'll make it, we'll talk about that next week.
Yeah.
And um yeah, when would you, when would you want a decision file?
When
Would you think would be useful to, to make on the page?
I think by the, by the end of the month, if we can come up with our our goals and objectives. So if the the staff could start moving along, I think that would be tremendously helpful.
So this project, they wanna start after February first?
I mean, in order to, I'm talking about EDR specifically.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, EDR, yeah.
Like when would, when would we want to
Um
to decide on that?
Shorten?
Yeah.
They wanna start in months.
I think it's it's ten thousand dollars and if it's
Yeah.
Not a heavy one.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, but I don't think
I
I'll remind the board, there are two separate lines, each with fifty thousand dollars in it, that the board kinda has discretion for studies. Um one was specifically spelled out as a master plan studies and the other um is just town board consultant. So if you choose, there's money in the budget for such.
Okay, no question.
Then are there any studies um outstanding that that we might need money for?
Not at the moment.
The PACE planning one isn't coming out of
I I think, yeah, we still have funds left over from the um the money that uh SG gave the town for uh hamlet improvement. And I think money could come from there for the PACE study.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
We should get an accounting of that.
What's that?
We should get an accounting of that, that's how much, like, how much is left?
Uh, well, that's the five hundred thousand.
Jill, I just wanted to ask a question about the Amsterdam.
Yeah, I have an example, but off the top my head, it's a
Is, is that Money from a fund that we're getting for that and it was that, there was talk that like somebody wanted to donate
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, I know, okay.
It'll happen again.
That 100 20, that that 100 20 has been dropped a lot.
Not gonna happen, not gonna happen.
We we spent that multiple times or without having it.
Okay, so the next thing, the next thing on um this goals list is the rec master plan, which we've done.
And not really spent it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we have the public art movable art, which is um something that I I think um
We
maybe if we have an arts arts and culture committee, maybe they can look at that, we'll we'll talk about that later.
That was in part in reference to the the mural paintings.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes, I think the determination was that the murals were extremely expensive.
Twenty-five, twenty-five per?
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, per and they would be permanent, right? This was before I was on the board, but I recall the discussion that they would be permanent, so and then
Yeah. Per, permanent, correct. Yeah, and private property, they would agree to keep it, but
For like a year's sake.
It was up there. Oh, right, and then
By public property, the side of, make make an example, the side of uh town hall is like, girl, that the
And the thinking was that maybe students could make, students could do murals and they could be movable.
I think it's gonna
So that's why the movable art part is in there.
I think if we're gonna be looking at like public art and things like that, it should be done through a committee with some consideration for what the community wants to see as public art.
Right, that's why I mentioned if we have the arts and culture committee back online, that
Yeah.
that would be a good way to do it.
I agree.
Okay, and then next, we talked about electric bus, we talked about cell service. So I think we went through everything on this list that we had covered last year. So um so the board will take a look and be ready to come back with, you know, with some decisions. Hopefully by next week.
Yeah, the other thing that I um included for the board was the current projects that town is working on. Uh just so that you're aware, so these are our need-to-have projects as opposed to the rest of the head projects.
Yeah.
Um and so uh just so that you're aware that, you know, infrastructure stuff continues to work.
What is the M O G O?
Mogo is a um a route that we were working on with um Austin. It's near without Austin, go.
Okay.
Um and uh Sabrina was working on it with um Dana Levinberg.
Mm-hmm.
Um but she was still supervisor over Austin. Um and uh I don't know what the status of it is at the moment, um I can certainly send down for you. Um but they were trying to um create a pedestrian and um and bicycle um extension that would go up 133.
Okay.
Um but it it's weird, there's like, there's no like shoulder there, there's no delineation, like there's no protection for a
133, oh, okay, yeah, on the other side of, yeah.
I'm surprised. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So Jill, do you wanna go over the current staff projects with us?
Um
Oh, I didn't mean to jump ahead, I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, I I wasn't really, I wasn't going to
You know, already If you wanna go through a list with us?
Um I didn't really wanna go through all of these with you guys, people will be too, I will, but there's like a gazillion of them.
Okay. Cause it's on the agenda, so
Yeah, um
This is just to keep us informed, can you just, can you just go over just on the list of our people from here about
Yeah, just to keep you informed. Sure, let me just go over a couple of the FEMA things and and the the water infrastructure.
Yeah.
So uh the Macon Dam on is sunny with preserve and it was a piece of property that we uh took in rent, which means due to, you know, the liquid taxes, the town said this is great, we take this beautiful piece of property, only to find out it had a dam on it, which at the time wasn't problematic for anybody. Thus forward, D E C?
I can't hear the sound, wait up, how do we do this?
D E C comes along and tells us that that um they've reclassified the dam and it is now a high hazard dam. Um people
To be clear, to be clear, if it's not needed, it's going to break.
So it's
Right, if it goes decommissioned, then it's, yes, if it decommissioned
It doesn't, yeah.
It's being monitored on a monthly basis.
Monday basis, which is very expensive. We have gotten substantial progress, well over a million dollars for the decommission of it. Once it is decommissioned, it will be then replanted um with native uh wetland planting, so we can restore it to the wetland that it was before this maybe dam was uh erected. Um the pedestrian bridge replacement is our little Buck Pond Bridge uh walkway that um had some subs- had some substantial damage uh due to one of the hurricanes we uh
About three years ago, two years ago?
I, on site, yes.
Yeah, we still
It was three, I think it was three years ago.
E S I S, I think, yeah.
Yeah, three years ago, anyway, it has been, it has been um uh re- um resupplied. Um so it's it's fine for people to walk on, but that's a temporary measure and it's going to need to be redone. So we're just, we're working with FEMA to take and replace that.
Any timeline on that?
It's a FEMA timeline.
It's a FEMA timeline, okay.
Um it's something very different, um
Right. But at least people can walk on it, right?
No, no, people can walk on it, so that's that's great.
Step needs regularly with FEMA.
Yes, to go to go through it, just this is like a
It's not dormant, it's
No, 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 it's it's order anyway.
Even a siege one.
If FEMA actually manages the project for us, they will just give us money?
Okay.
Well, they
No.
They give us money.
They give us money, yes.
They just give us money, okay.
And we
But they have to approve all the steps and and
The one way.
Okay.
and with that particular um project, were we going to rebuild it back? Were we going to replace it?
替换
Were we, and it was, we need a determination from FEMA, they're paying for it. We're going to do the max that we can do with what they're gonna give us.
Okay, so we lay all the cards out on the table and then make a determination. We're fine with it, um, by the lake, Lewis Culver replacement, same sort of thing, the public school, Ida came through. Oh, the pedestrian system is um, sport Ida, I thought it was a, yes.
Wasn't that?
It was Ida.
Okay, um, the other, so, yeah.
There were one after the other, I can't remember which year this was.
Um, again, we have Tectonic hired for the uh the designing documents, um, for us if they can um replace the culver.
Right.
The culver is a a kind of a bridge tunnel that goes under a road, that allows people to come one side to the other.
Exactly.
Um, we had been trying to get FEMA to pay for generators at the community center, but it's not successful. Uh, we also have a project with them on on Sheva Road for uh slope stabilization and storm control. Um, after again, Ida came through and uh uh did some serious damage, um, it could be a trip. Trip and Sheva, just Sheva? Just Sheva, yeah, I think it's just Sheva, it's almost there. Anyway, um, so we're waiting for uh Tectonic to come through, um, they're designing some stormwater improvements. And then.
I have a question about the generators.
Sure.
So there was a grant application that was denied and FEMA is still, and then they're on the same.
No, there was grant application today, so.
By FEMA, so that is not, we're not getting money from them.
No, not yet.
Okay, so, you know, I, this is a huge list, so I don't want to take up the whole meeting with it, so basically, you've got generators, water infrastructure, um, you know, the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, Chapa, get me part chap line, I mean, we can look, talk for a long time about about it, and so I um, I'm not sure that this is the best.
It will take us hours to go through this. Yeah, if anybody has any questions, happy to answer.
Yeah, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna cut off any discussion, but it is a very, very big list.
Okay.
And so.
Yeah, feel free to just.
At some point, okay.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I mean, these are things that we've talked about over time, and so.
Yep. Um.
Now, but once, if there's a, if there's a good way of summarizing it, of summarizing this really quickly and make maybe doing a
So Jill, are you reading?
Good. No, just so that the board is aware of the, yeah.
A quick, a quick presentation, yeah. But you know, it it would be great for the public to see this as well, because I'm very aware that we're looking at a list here that no one is really looking at and can't really go along with us to see what the town is doing, and I think it's important for people to see, so at some point would be great, especially when we do quarterly reports that we've discussed and that we'll be talking about
Yeah.
next week, I I think that at some point, it would be good to make a presentation and quickly just go over the the topics with people so that everyone can see very clearly what what's going on.
I think that's great, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I think that's how we'll get that.
And so when we do, when we do our, over the others, who will do that for you?
That would be great, okay.
Okay. That will be fine.
All right, so uh maybe we wanna turn this over to Rob and just let you talk about the capital projects, the close out projects that we got?
Okay.
Yeah. Sure, um, where to start? Um, in December, the board approved uh allocations of fund balance to close, I think it was four or five projects that we were. And uh, just to remind the board and anyone listening, in the past, the town had a cycle of borrowing money every between three and five years to fund capital projects and and typically, we're in a bit cash flow situation, so we didn't necessarily have to borrow beforehand. And the advantage of that is you know exactly how much your project is, so often we have overruns. And that's the case with the downtown infrastructure project, so um we borrow after the project's done, we complete the project, we close it out. Well, last year after our financials were released, we were in the enviable position of having a rather significant fund balance. The honest on it, at the time, was over eighteen million dollars. Um, we had some really good stuff happen, last year we had the sale of uh, I say last year, I'm going back to twenty-two, but the sale of uh Ait's Cross at a nice premium and uh some good financial results and sales tax, mortgage tax, et cetera. So we have the position where the town has cash, and so why would we borrow now and pay the interest rates that we're seeing when we have cash to fund these? So um, as we start to close out some of these projects, we're asking the board to allocate fund balance to uh to close some of these projects. So the project in particular that I'm talking about today is the downtown Hamlet project. And just to review, that was a project that actually, the conception was probably what, two thousand and fourteen, I think, when we hired WSB to to begin planning that.
Right.
And um, it's a really long process, Jeremy, was in some of those really painful meetings. Um, for all intents and purposes, the construction is done, there's a few punchless items, uh, we but unable to close it out um financially, because we still, there are a few punchless items and we're withholding some money from um the contractor and the engineer on the project, the project manager, because they haven't completed everything, so um, what I'm asking today though is to move, the the project was originally budgeted at uh or estimated at fourteen point seventy million dollars. When we borrowed, we borrowed thirteen point seventy with the hope that that one million was kind of contingency, and if we didn't need it, it would stay in our fund balance, well.
Wishful thinking.
That was uh.
Wishful thinking.
That was a dream. Um, so and and why I'm coming to you today, we didn't put the money in the project in the beginning, because we didn't need to and we wanted to see how it played out. Well, I need to now, because we're in a deficit there and I need to to move some money into the capital fund. Um, so that's why I'm asking now, we kinda hoped at the end of twenty-three, we would be able to close it out and do everything all at once. Um, we did get, in twenty-three, did see the uh county approve the sewer and the water lines, which is one big thing we were waiting on. And that was completed, but these punchless items, uh, Bob Sealy tells me, New York State DOT is kinda the holdup here, that we're waiting for their approval on some of the ADA compliance items, so um, so that's why we're not gonna be able to close it out at this point, but I would like to move the one million dollars that was originally slated to go into that project. I would like authorization to move it into that project, so uh, we're gonna ask you for a resolution, resolution next week, so that if anybody has any questions tonight or uh later on in the week that I can answer for you, um.
Okay, well, it it seems reasonable, it was a project that is underway, very important, and it was um intended from the beginning, so and and.
Feel free. It was, it was very, very comprehensive, we we did.
This is a particularly good time for us to be using fund balance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because of what you described, this, you know.
Yeah, I would agree.
Sort of windfall from you from unexpected sources and, so it's a good time.
Yeah, and that's what we've done, if if we go back to maybe uh prior to two thousand and eighteen and and Jeremy will remember, on the board when he started, we began to build up fund balance after years of of having it kind of deteriorate, we were building up fund balance, and then when we borrowed in two thousand and eighteen, we used uh some of that fund balance to help pay down the debt service. We're in the situation right now where we don't even have to borrow and use fund balance, we can use fund balance to fund the project, so um I will give the board a a further update on the projection where I see it, uh, I think February twenty-seventh,
Right.
we scheduled kind of a, we're gonna get back to quarterly financial reports. And I'll update the board at that point in time, both on the operating activities of twenty-three and um on where I think the fund balance looks like it's going, going forward. In um, probably mid-May or early June, we'll have our financial statements for twenty-three. That will give us the updated fund balance number at that point in time, and we'll have another discussion as to maybe where we wanna go from that point.
Do you anticipate the fund balance going up or down? I know it's early in the year.
So based on the operating activities of twenty-three, I see it increasing again. Um, it it won't show that, because the net will be, we're using some of these funds. Um, we didn't know, Vic, you asked me earlier today, did we anticipate it in the twenty-three operating budget? We didn't, because at the time we created that in the fall of twenty-two, we didn't realize what our financial situation would be until May, so no, it wasn't anticipated ahead of time, but it doesn't necessarily have to be, if the board authorizes these allocations, the auditors are fine with it.
Okay.
In in fact, I did call the auditor this week, because they said, do I need that resolution before December thirty-first? And he said, no, as long as you get it done in the first meeting yourself, um, that's okay to retroactive, uh, retroactively make that journal entry, so.
Okay. And it is coming out of a very healthy fund balance.
Very much so, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we um, you you don't wanna go below fifteen to twenty percent, that's really the standard that the auditors look for and even the state would look for. Yeah, we were seventy, eighty percent, so we're we're very comfortable and um.
Okay, it's a little too high.
Too.
Wouldn't say too high, because and and if you ask the auditors and um, you know, I, when I first started this job, I did ask the auditors, it's too high, and they said, well, no, it's not, because you don't know what's gonna come down the bike, and then if you have a responsible plan for spending that money, um then you're gonna use it and and be able to fund these projects without exceeding the tax cap, which um, we were able to use fund balance allocations in the twenty-four budget. And this was a difficult tax cap year for a variety of reasons, and you know, we went through those, but um, we didn't need to exceed the tax cap, because we had some of this fund balance, so um, we're in a really good.
Okay.
Love to hear it.
Very good, thank you, Rob. Okay, so any, any other questions on capital projects? No? Okay, so let's move on to boards and commissions liaison appointment.
So I believe.
So we have done that.
Right, so they're out of everybody's package, so we've got new board liaisons, so um.
And we have this. Mm-hmm. Should I announce that?
Sure.
Who's doing what?
Okay.
Okay, so we have um Friends of Chapa will be Jen. Um, B A B will be Ally again. Um, Conservation and Landmark Advisory are Holly. Ethic will be Jeremy. S A B will be Holly. Um, I will be on the Airport Advisory Committee. Climate Smart will be Jeremy. Millwood West End Advisory Board will be me. Holocaust and Human Rights will be Ally. The CREI will be me and we will reseat that committee. Uh, Business Development will be Holly. Rec and Parks Commission will be Ally. Um, School Liaison will be me, although School Liaison was never a um, a boards and commissions liaison position, was it?
No, I.
Before last, I traditionally, it's really the supervisor that interacts with the with the superintendent, so I think we can go back
Yeah.
to that, it's not necessarily, it's not an official boards and commissions liaison position.
Okay. Right.
Um, okay, so Ethics will be Jen, Police Liaison Jeremy, Farmers Market Ally, Chamber of Commerce Holly. Student Advocacy, which we have not had, and actually I want to, to change that one to um not Student Advocacy, but stu- a Student Government Engagement Committee, so we'll talk about that next week.
You engagement.
Yeah, um, we'll talk about that next week, so that will be Jen. LGBTQ will be myself and the Arts and Culture Committee, which has been dormant, which we will revive, will be Jen. And that's it.
Vicky, there was one thing I was wondering about, which was what, and I asked Jeremy, and I just wanted to ask, like, does the Climate Smart Task Force, is that that seems to have a lot of overlap with the S A B? Is there inefficiency having two separate contacts, or does it, do they stand alone enough that, and Jill, let me be.
Um, that would have to be that within the work of the committee, I'm not sure, um, Jeremy was on it last year, if you wanna talk to each other and switch it, switch over.
Yeah, let's discuss it.
It's fine with me.
Okay.
You can dis- you can discuss it, yeah, just let us know.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that it, you know, that it probably like, no kind of overlap, right, so.
Well, do you wanna tell us what you'd like to do, or do you wanna talk about it?
Well, I I feel probably combining the two people uh together, which is gonna, I'm gonna split up.
Okay.
Okay, you can let us, so that people know, okay.
Okay, we'll let you know then.
All right, so thank you, everybody, for taking that on. And um, okay, so we're gonna move on to meetings with volunteer boards.
Right, so.
Um, so we determined that that would be a good practice to meet with our volunteer boards to see, you know, what they're doing, to give them feedback and um to see whether we're all on track and on the same page, I know that the Conservation Board wanted to meet with us regarding their mission. Um, we're looking at open lands and they they have taken on, over time, they've taken on different roles, so that's become a question for them, so we
Right.
you can meet with them, we'll discuss that.
And we are.
Um, Jill, I know that you wanted to schedule a meeting with one of the boards.
S A B is coming on the line.
S A B is on the line, okay.
Um. Yeah, we're gonna be talking with them in executive session and then also um in uh in work session.
Okay, very good.
B A B is planning on a presentation for the spring, maybe like early spring, late winter, but we're getting a ballroom in there, so hopefully they'll be presenting to us.
Oh, wonderful.
That's.
That'll be great to hear, so they've wanted to meet with the board for a long time, so that we're finally doing.
We're excited, I'm excited to hear what they have to say.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll be reaching out to the boards to to schedule, schedule meetings.
Yep.
Um. Okay, that's we've reached the end of the topics, did you have any other topic, Jill, before we get to proposed actions?
Um, no, other than the fact that um um, there is another proposed action, which um uh, which we had talked about in the executive session, well, Rob, is this just a monthly?
So the um, to one seventy-five, the labor is a one-time charge, the eighty-four is the monthly.
Okay, so um, so did we approve this next, oh, you have it for me, okay.
Yeah.
We've been working behind the scenes.
They are so efficient.
Yeah.
Um, so um, uh, in a little bit of a um, a modification of our contract with Logically, uh, we wanted to um add a uh a managed backup uh for three sixty-five data for uh fourteen users. Um, which is an eighty-four dollar a month charge, um, with a one-time hundred and seventy-five dollar charge, and there'll be a resolution that reflects that.
Thank you.
The fourteen is a specific set, or is that just enough to, or?
It's the board in department.
I'm sure there was an item in the revised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
That made a a memo, but it didn't make the work session agenda. We talked about um, we wanted to talk about boards and commission vacancies.
Yes, I'm sorry, um.
That's okay, so we were going to announce that we have vacancies on our Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, the Airport Advisory Board and the CREI.
The ERB.
We have an alternate, yes.
Yes.
But we have one more, no, Y I.
Okay, okay, okay.
Right, um, yeah.
The Airport Advisory Board.
And the ERB.
And the ERB.
And the ERB, okay.
Okay.
Is that Jack Rosenbaum's committee, am I?
Um. I'm sorry, second.
Is Jack Rosenbaum, point start, was he headed that commit, yeah? What did he, that a year ago?
No. Yeah, it was more recent.
Yeah.
Did we say Landmarks Advisory Committee? We have um.
Do we have a vacancy?
We have um a vacancy and we have a submission, we we got a note from Gray Williams that a submission was made months ago for the Landmarks Advisory Committee and um, they they need someone's assistance there.
Actually, that one, if I recall.
And so we need to, we need to fill that one pretty quickly.
Okay.
That one has um a broad range, I think, in the number, so I think it's.
Yeah, if there are other additional people, I think um, he was, yeah.
I think there's one, one here other vacancy there. Okay, but um, he was saying that they need a particular person to be interviewed and hopefully appointed, because they they really need
Mm-hmm. Assistance.
The person's assistance there, so I think we need to do that.
Okay. So we're gonna have an interview on the ninth.
Yeah, we need to do that as soon as possible, so next week would be great.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Typical taking reach out. Okay.
Okay, thanks. Yes, oh, good. Okay, so should we go, yeah, we're on that one.
Was that actually?
Am I supposed to start, Rob?
Sure.
Oh, no, Jill, Jill, I thought you wanted to go over.
Oh, um, oh, just.
Over this, like you, like you usually do, you don't have to, but you usually go over it before we start the resolutions.
Sure. Okay, no, 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 something. So um, right, so we've got our retroactive approval, uh, for our payment of plan, which is stated December twenty-ninth. Our authorization to accept the resignation DPW, this was a water unit individual, um, and authorization to post and then rehire that spot. We have authorization to uh appoint um an individual to the planning board um, as well as to the recognition. And uh, we've got authorization to approve the revised proposal regarding the property lying in typographical survey right of way at the intersection of Ford and Red Road and Mo's Post. Does anyone have any questions on that? Thank you. Uh, the next is authorization to award the RFP for the twenty twenty-four decorative flower program. Uh, Dennis has provided us with a rather substantial packet, and we are happy to see our hanging baskets are gonna come back with with a vengeance. Um.
They look wonderful.
They 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 really, they have so got, you know, it's it's such a spectacular addition, thank you so much. Um, we are going to authorize the RFP for um digital services, um, it's going to be returned. Um we are going to authorize the R F P for um vision services, um it's going to be returnable on February eighth ninth, it's gonna be a quick um return date, um authorization for the police to attend a conference, and that's it. Does anyone have any questions on the answer there?
I don't wanna start yet.
All right.
Okay, all right.
Oh, yeah.
We're very eager, so go ahead.
No, she was looking.
No, she's like looking at us, she's looking at the, I'm like, no, 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 the two of us.
Yeah.
Uh I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of six hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars in eighty-one cents listed on the summary, A P check register and detail voucher detail reports dated December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Checks are printed and distributed to each payment, must date on Friday, December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Second.
All in favor?
All in.
I move to accept the resignation of Daniel Setra from the position of Labor within the Department of Public Works Water Unit effective December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, the town would like to thank Daniel for his service. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the posting and hiring for the position of Labor within the Department of Public Works Water Union unit with a salary ranging from fifty thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-nine cents to sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seven cents, which is Group Two Step One. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Alex?
I move to authorize the appointment of Jeffrey Seidler as an alternate member of the Planning Board for term of five years effective January third, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
I move to authorize the appointment of Mark Rappelwano as a member of the Recreation Commission for a term of seven years effective January third, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to accept the proposal from Creighton Manning Engineering L L P for professional land surveying services, the property lying right of way and topographic survey at the intersection of Croton Lake Road and Lois Place, for the total amount not to exceed five thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I I move to accept the proposal for the spring two thousand twenty-four decorative flower program for downtown Chapel Millwood to cude the pack court with a total amount of five thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars forty cents as proposed submit, proposal submitted in date of December twentieth of twenty twenty-three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh I move to authorize the town administrator issue of R F P and accept proposals for town legal services.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize one sergeant and two police officers to send initial response to active shooter training course to be held in, ooh, Oriskina, New York.
Risking.
Risking.
I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what county that's in, but uh with one
It's up there.
Risking County.
Uh one session, he held January eighth to ninth, for the session uh the twenty-seventh, twenty fifth of January of this year, for the total cost of one hundred eighty dollars fifty cents per officer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jen, you want to take it?
Make us home.
Uh one more.
No, no, two more.
Two more.
Two more.
One more.
Two more, yes.
I I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals for the position of Recreation Attorney within the Recreation and Parks Department to service street trip shuttles at the corresponding rates as indicated below, effective January fifth, twenty twenty-three. This resolution hereby revises the one previously adopted on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, names listed below.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to accept the proposal from Logically for Office three sixty-five emailing archive and capability for fourteen accounts with the initial startup fee, the one that gets only five dollars, plus the rate of six dollars per account for a total amount of eighty-four dollars per month.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hmm, so I think that concludes our meeting, our first meeting of the year.
One more.
So.
Jen, thank you so much, everyone. Congrats, Jen, for your first meeting.
May I have a motion to?
I move to a jury. Oh, I'm sorry.
I move to a jury.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You took it away from him, you don't say a motion to a jury.